I call this meeting of the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency to order for January the 28th, 2012. Roll call please, Kathy Steer.
Henry Quant.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Angleton, excused. Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Excuse me.
And Wes Ryan.
Here.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak before the agency at this time? If not, before you have the minutes of the October 22nd and November 26th meetings of 2012, are there any corrections or a motion to accept?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, minutes are approved. Versus a special order of business. In January of each year, we elect an agency chair and vice chair. At this time, I'd like to open nominations for the agency chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate an individual who's not here this evening, and that's the penalty. Roger Sprague.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, we have a new chair. I now open up nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate yourself, Henry Quant, as vice chair, just to keep consistency.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, I'm vice chair. Next order of business is Kurt and Allison, excuse me.
Good evening. One of the projects that was selected by the agency was the undergrounding of the overhead utilities in the D-Lake District along the west side of Highway 101 from northwest Second Street to southwest Eb Avenue. A major component of this project is the conversion of the existing traffic signals, which hang from wires at First Street, to an upgraded system which has mast arms. There were five submittals for the design and engineering for this project that we received, and we, and Group McKenzie from Portland was selected. Attached to your copy of the staff report, I believe you have our scope of work and the cost proposal, and I believe the selection criteria that we used in selecting among the proposals was attached to the resolution. You'll find it attached to the resolution. Group McKenzie's worked with the city on a number of projects, including the Ocean Lake-D Lake Traffic Signal Upgrade Project many years ago. This project included new traffic signals, vehicle detection, illumination, and the signal interconnect system throughout that area of the city. That took place at the intersections at North Sixth Street, there at the D-Lake School, Fourteenth Street, and Seventeenth Street, and then in addition, in that project, we eliminated traffic signal at 21st Street. By interconnecting the signals, the vehicles move through that area much better than they used to in the past, and we didn't even have vehicle detection for any of those signals in the past before that project was implemented. So Allison and I began to meet with affected business owners and property owners to give them a heads up that the project is coming. Probably will need easements from all of them for the footings, for the mastheads. We normally do. And then we'll invite them again to the first kickoff meeting with the consultant if this project moves forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the agency might have, and the action on this item would be to approve the resolution later in the meeting.
Do we have any questions, your staff?
On the, under project understanding and scope of work, Bert, and then the second paragraph down, project startup, third sentence, "It is understood that the new design shall replace the existing controller cabinet opticom receivers, a new two-section signal head." It's going to replace that new two-section signal head, is it? Or is it putting in a new two-section signal head?
Yeah, I think that's just engineering speak for the types of signal heads that are going in, that they come in two sections.
Okay, and the next sentence, "And some all vehicle detection."
Yeah, well, and that's the vehicle, that's the in-ground system, those loops that go in.
Well, is it some or is it all?
Well, all. Maybe all, yeah.
Okay. Second question, page two, second paragraph. First sentence, second paragraph, erosion control plan and details, parentheses, if required. If required by who?
Well, it depends on the type of project, if it's required by us or NODOT. And it depends on how the project is designed, whether it's a, whether the project will be bored throughout, or they'll be trenching, and so it'll be different, and depending on if it's built behind the sidewalk or in the street.
Okay. And on that same page, construction contract administration, it refers to page seven, and I couldn't access any page seven, anything past page three, basically.
The contract administration isn't part of this contract. It would be part of a, it would be part of a subsequent contract after we award the construction.
And under project closeout. Final construction services could also include a site visit.
Yeah, again, that would be part of a subsequent contract for construction oversight.
So that's not part of this contract?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Thirty-Fifth Street?
Okay, so the next project, following the 2006 community visioning effort for Nelscott, the agency purchased two properties south and east of the Nelscott Strip businesses in order to construct some projects that were outlined in the community vision plan. With the anticipated ODOT Highway project, what we're calling the Nelscott Gaps Project, this project will construct additional parking that will offset the loss of some parking spaces that happened during that project, during the ODOT project. In addition, a portion of the property is going to be subdivided to make available for development a piece of property along the strip, so it'd be to the area south of the Christmas Cottage, between the Christmas Cottage and the new parking lot. There's an area there that could be developed. We're going to subdivide that off into a lot and then make it available for development. So we had four proposals submitted for the design and engineering of this project, and again, we selected Group McKenzie, and again, you have the scope of work and the cost for the proposal, and again, the criteria and the scoring is attached to the resolution. Group McKenzie has designed several similar projects for us in the past, including the parking lot in the, what we call our Parking Lot/Community Garden/RV Dump Station Experimental Parking Lot Site there behind Ace Hardware, where we used the experimental, we experimented with the previous concrete to see how that would work and hold up for, as an alternative for water detention and water quality. And best we can tell, the previous concrete still drains very well. Seems to be a good alternative that we won't want to consider for the future and possibly on this project as well. Again, I'd be glad to answer any of your questions, and the action item is to the resolution to follow.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Kurt, again, this one and the other both being McKenzie, I noticed the names were different, so there's no synergism or we're able to capitalize on, you know, one, use same people for both projects, the wayside lights, and this takes entirely different skill set.
Right. That's what we've, we had some discussion about that, and timing too. The traffic signal's going to take much longer to put together the engineering and the design for that versus the parking lot. So the parking lot will be probably ready to go much sooner, and the lead on that's probably more of a landscape architect than the traffic engineer for the other project.
The other thing is there, when, the scope of things, could you tell that we got a break in costs by, again, utilizing the same company for variety of projects when you were comparing to the other, you know, in essence, bidders or those who...
Yeah, we kind of decide, we kind of figured early on that that wasn't really going to figure into it, just because of the scheduling and the different disciplines. We, there probably will during the construction phase, you know, that might be an opportunity to have some overlap. Let's see.
And I guess, again, just for clarification, both these, the one previous of the light and this, is for design and engineering?
That's correct.
And the process then, again, would be, you'd bring back a, that design and a bid for construction, so there's ongoing touching of this project. By approving this, there's still more steps that the agency will see, is that...
Correct.
And I guess I'm looking at the, the bid process doesn't automatically go to McKenzie or something for construction. There'll be a bid process that actually...
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Kurt, on the proposal, page two, proposed project schedule, last item is property line adjustment, and it looks like it's going to take seven weeks to do that?
Yeah, apparently, that's kind of the administrative part of the thing. There's a survey that goes into it and determining the size and staking it out and such, but apparently, there's a, there's the whole planning department process that needs to go through for this lot line adjustment, basically.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions? Okay.
I do have one more, Mr. Chair. On the Part Five of the proposal, Kurt, construction support optional services?
Yep.
Do we anticipate needing any of those services?
This is for the parking lot? Not likely. Not, for the...
Construction support, one attend bid opening, prepare bid fabrication.
Probably the one that we would, that we will need, end up doing is the, the one that says RFI, that's request for information, so when the contractor's bidding, bidding the project and there's questions on the plans, then we would need their, need their help with answering those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Next item, please.
This topic is the facade improvement loan program, and it's a request for additional funds by a current person who has a loan already. And as you may recall, some changes were made last year to the program. The individual loan amount was increased from $50,000 to $75,000, and the 0% interest rate and payback terms remain the same. While improvement to the facade is still required, other uses for the funds were added, such as building expansion, roofing, signage, and interior renovations of public space. So the request before you is, as I mentioned, from a current loan recipient who'd like additional funds in the amount of $7,000 to further improve a building in the Ocean Lake District. And the loan committee did meet today to discuss the request, and we did have unanimous approval to recommend issuing these funds. Questions?
Yeah, mine is just kind of a administrative, it's just, I'm finding real trouble to vote for something I don't see, don't know, don't, not being on the loan committee. Is there a way to phrase the approval, that the agency is, you know, approving the recommendation of the loan committee, or, so rather than approving the loan, because I'm a little bit, and I'm looking, oh, there's Joan Kelsey, a way to frame that and still be a legal approval? Does that make sense?
Joan, Joan, there may be a little bit of delay here. I think she's on Mars, but, no, she's not.
She's smiling.
Can you tell me exactly the question?
The question is, the loan committee is making a recommendation to the agency for approval of a loan. I have trouble as an individual on the agency of voting, it's wording, but how can I very well approve a loan that I haven't seen the details about or even know who it's with? So I'm looking for phraseology that will allow me to acknowledge and approve the recommendation of the loan committee and still be, you know, binding of the agency?
You left me at a little loss for words.
Say, Mr. Chair.
Well, here, let's see if Joan can help.
I don't think she knows about the change. The loan process has changed now. We used to be able to publicly state.
Hold on, we had this before. This isn't the first time, I think, that we've come with...
But I think it's the second.
Yes.
So I don't know that she would remember, that the, the mayor is wondering, because he does not know who the loan is actually going to, whether he can vote in agreement with the loan committee versus voting for the loan itself.
I guess the question is whether the information from the committee has been shared to the extent that you feel comfortable voting for the loan. If you don't have sufficient information, then it should come back, back to you.
Well, as I understand it, you know, it's because of the privacy and whatnot. I don't have any problem, I have a lot of faith in the loan committee. So I'm comfortable, it's, I think it's wording that I'm stumbling on.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can look at this for the next one and see if we can come up with something that's a little clearer, or find a different method of, you know, maybe someone from the loan committee meets with their partner on the agency and to discuss any questions.
Yeah, or maybe it's simply the legal opinion that we can allow the loan committee to have, you know, lending authority. I mean, does it...
But that's actually, that's actually not the case. It's actually the agency that is making the loan. I suggest we come back and we'll, we'll return with a clearer process that you're comfortable with and that meets your obligations.
Okay. Well, I certainly don't have a problem. I'd make a motion to approve, you know, the, take the recommendation loan committee and approve it, to move it on, but it's, it's a stumbling block for me in the future.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I didn't mean to cut you off there, Mayor, but...
No, I didn't.
Here, are you...
Oh, no, Mr. Chair, I know this is after we voted, but could I just briefly state these two sentences in the recommendation? And that is, is that the property is within the urban renewal district, and the work to be completed meets the requirements of the rehabilitation loan program, and the applicant meets the equity requirement, and an escrow review letter was provided to the agency loan committee. So I'd, I'd like for the general public to know that, along with what Allison, Mr. Robertson has said, that that's kind of the complete picture of what's, what's transpired. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Ellingson, for that clarification.
Any more comments? Okay. Local program support grants? Next item.
This is the local program support grant, local program support grant program. This is one of the economic development tools that you all wanted to move forward last year, and so we're bringing back a draft program. And the goal of this program is to provide annual financial assistance for local organizations involved in economic development activities that support the mission of the Urban Renewal Agency and provide services within the Urban Renewal District. The draft program document proposes grants up to $10,000, which would be subject to availability up to an initial $50,000 of annual funding. And multiple grants to one organization can be possible for different programs, as long as the total amount does not exceed $25,000 in one year. Eligible activities could be, for example, a technical assistance program, tuition for small business management program, or scholarships for training courses. So in your staff report, you should have had the draft program for review.
You don't have any questions?
So the action is for input into the stuff we're not voting on?
Correct.
Actually, I do have some questions. Has there been a look at, at the process, meaning, I'm wondering what's this going to do to staff and the, how much time it takes to process it, you know, first and foremost, or is it anticipated there won't be huge demand that's going to, because we're limited by dollars?
Yeah, the demand, we don't know what the demand will be, and I think the process will be similar to the facade improvement program, with the loan committee then becoming the funding committee, where they would review, there would be, you know, the application that would come before you again for approval to see what's required and get a description of the, what the program is.
And it will be somewhat limited just because of the organizations that are out there that are doing economic development. We've really only identified three organizations that probably would take advantage of this.
Well, so it's, it's really organizations, or would it be, see, I've been interpreting that a business could, an employee even in a business could ask to be sent to some kind of training?
They could, but what we're looking at is for some, for an organization that offers that training, and this would help supplement their program. So we're talking about the Small Business Development Center, Lincoln County Economic Development Alliance, maybe the Chamber of Commerce, that would have some sort of an economic development program that we could help fund.
Oh, great.
Without creating another one.
Okay. Now, just so, I didn't interpret it that way as I was reading.
Well, good.
You might go, because my questions were kind of in that respect, then I was envisioning the individual or business owner, you know, asking for stuff, and so the questions then were, how do you, how do you exclusivize, if that's even a word, just to the urban, urban renewal area, since you reinforce, you know, businesses located, to assist businesses located? So I had envisioned, gee, that can't be the chamber, because it's, or do you have someone at the gate of the training that says, yes, you can come in, no, you can't? So I, it's, I don't know if I'm helping, but go ahead, jump in anytime you feel...
Go ahead. Quick, but...
I interpret it the same way as you did, Mr. Mayor, but I go back to the background of part of the presentation, and it does state, the goal of the program is to provide assistance for local organizations involved in economic development activities, so it's not businesses.
So it helps, yeah, right there, it's goal organizations. That helps. Because, yeah, that would, that would take care of a lot of my, my questions, and thank you.
Any more questions?
Just, I do have a note on the process. I noted the dates, applications, and, you know, January 1, it'd be available, and then kind of an application date, deadline of March 1. Then the fiscal year ends June 30. So is that, funds have to be then spent before June 30? So I'm wondering if maybe there ought to be two...
Two cycles.
You know, one six-month period, or trying to match up to fiscal year period, but...
Yeah, that's totally draft, so obviously, January 1 is, I mean, the funds are available, but we don't have the process in place to issue them, so...
So, yeah, then the answer for me might be, well, maybe we move that to a July 1 and put some kind of a date to capture the to-come yet fiscal year, unless you're trying to do something yet.
Well, the discussions we had with those organizations that I mentioned was, would this be a benefit to you if it was just open year-round, like our other program, just whenever you've had? And they all, I think unanimously, said, well, we've sort of worked on a budget basis, and so it doesn't hurt us to just make a submittal once a year for projects that'll happen next year, and then they can budget for them, and then we can budget for them. So we weren't expecting that we would provide the money, provide, you know, approve one in March and spend the money by June. We were thinking, then that would help us put together our budget for, for the next year of how much we needed to fund the program with, how many requests we've had for the, for the next fiscal year.
Assuming that budget gets approved, huh? See, that, I guess that's what I was trying to get away from, was getting you trapped with committing to somebody outside your approved fiscal year budget, you know, minor, but that was...
Sounds good.
Any more questions? And what action do we need on this?
I do actually have a question. What would happen to this program when urban renewal sunsets? Does the program go away, or is it as something that will continue on?
The program could last as long as the city or the agency decided to fund it, so...
Any more questions? Actions?
I think just some feedback, and then if you would like, we can come back with a more finalized document for your approval of the program with the application and...
Do we have consensus for bringing it back for approval? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Business expansion loan program.
In the fall, the agency expressed an interest in creating a business expansion loan program, and the goal of this program is to provide existing businesses located within the urban renewal district with funding for, for business expansion, equipment purchase, et cetera, that would result in creating at least one full-time position. We've had, we had a number of meetings with banks and organizations that offer similar programs in order to help develop a workable plan for Lincoln City. There was one question that came, that was raised early on, asking how area banks might feel about us creating this program. So we, Allison and I, met with each branch manager from all the banks in town to get their feedback on that question, and just to talk a little bit about their program, how it works, how it could work better, what could we do to help, to make our program different. And without exception, they all indicated their support for, for us creating this program, and that they truly hope that our, our recommendation, I mean, our requirements might be such that they oftentimes will get a worthy application, but because of the requirements that they have on them, they, they aren't able to give the loan, and so they, they, they hope that this, that our requirements might end up being such that, that we would, would be able to give it to a worthy applicant, and that they'd be able to pass those people on to us. In, what we're here tonight to do, in your packet, you've got Exhibit A, and in that is a bunch of stuff, and that maybe we could just quickly go through them, and what we need is your input on some of these points to see what you'd like to see in the plan. So before we drafted a plan, these are some of the questions that we had. So if you look at Exhibit A, the goal of the program obviously is to encourage business expansion and, and providing existing businesses located with the urban renewal district with the funding for business expansion, equipment, such. the funding for business expansion, equipment, such. And then, and some of the, the questions that come up are, um, do, do you want to tie this program to creating at least one full-time job? Do you want to tie this program to, um, to saying that it saved a job, that the expansion saved a position? Uh, I think those are, those are two of the first questions, and then the last one in this category is, um, do, do, some, some programs, um, that are offered, like the Cascade West Community, Cascade West, Cascade West Services, which is a part of the COG, the Cascade, the Council on Governments, has a program in Lincoln County where you have to go to a bank first, and if you don't qualify at a bank, then they can, then they would then step up and loan it. So of those, those three issues, are, is there any comments about how you feel one way or the other about creating a job or saving a job, or...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In my mind, creating one full-time equivalency or saving one full-time equivalency is about the same thing, because if you're saving a job, creating one, in my mind, um, so I kind of like that, uh, that at least save full-time equivalency, uh, well, as, I mean, sure, it'd be nice if they could also create one, but if they can save one, that's, that's a good deal. The, uh, I, I know we had loan programs before, when I, I served on this body, um, where we were helping people rehabilitate homes that, uh, they couldn't do it through a conventional banking system, and, and this is kind of like that same program only for, uh, for expansion. And I am greatly in favor of kind of things where there, there are some businesses that have the, the equity or bankroll, that have enough of a backup to buy a bank's needs, and this would be an opportunity for them to, and they're worthy, but they don't have all that back stuff. Or, Graham, I, I'm highly in favor of, like, I was for the home rehab thing.
Mr. Chairman, I guess the, the questions I have that first come to mind in that category is, I'm, I'm trying to think of an expansion that would save a job. Usually when you're expanding, you know, you're, you're creating, um, so I, I'm fuzzy what, what that might be. I'm, I'm sure it does, I'm just, I don't visualize it. The other is, as soon as I see unable to qualify for a conventional loan, I can see a lot of people lining up at your doorsteps, uh, for loan application opportunities. So there needs to be something else, a qualifier, um, and I, you talked about it for me, as the, the bank, going through the bank criteria, except for, you know, one, is a great loan credit, except for some, I don't know what it might be, but, uh, but, you know, no income, uh, defaulting inventory, uh, you know, lousy credit, you know, of course they don't qualify for a loan, and so are you gonna go into the, you're inviting them to apply to you, and I, I think you want to build some kind of screener in there. The referral from the institution, you know, makes, that might be the best thing, has to be referred by the local, a, a local institution or something. And, and with that, then, um, I've always liked to believe that lending's kind of a specialty art, and, you know, I'm, I'm not aware of our expertise in that area, so I, I would hope we maybe farm this out, much like we've done the facade program.
Yeah, I share your, um, your concern with this program. The more we checked into it, the more we realized that there, it's gonna be a lot different than the program that we have now, because we have real property as collateral, and, and we may end up having chairs and tables as collateral with this program. So I share that. And, and so what, what I've anticipated at this point is, the more I've heard about the Cascade West Financial Services Program, the more it, it looked like we could plug right into their program. They, they have a program that they already administer in Lincoln County, and it's a Lincoln County revolving loan program that money came from, um, some program in the past, and then it just is in a revolving fund now, CBDG grants, I think. And so we've talked to them a number of times, and it looks like, yeah, that we can just go, use their criteria, and obviously they have, they do that for a living, so that they know those things, and, and, and just go through, use their criteria. We would do much the same, that we would sort of pre-approve them at our level, and then have them go do the paperwork with the Cascade West Council.
Is there a way, if you look into just maybe allocating Cascade West a, a dollar amount to be used for Lincoln City Urban Renewal exclusively?
Yeah, that's what we were thinking, yeah, and that's what we've done with the other program, is, you know, it's our money, but it's their, it's actually their paperwork and their program.
So we'd give them an eligibility criteria that, whatever we come up with, that it fits, then send them down the...
Right. Yep.
Mr. Chair? Oh, excuse me.
No, I'm good.
Kurt, where it says, I know I read it down here, um, the private contribution, so is that something that Cascade West would tie into their qualifications?
Right, if, if that's something that we put on there as a prerequisite, and so we'll come to that, if, if...
Oh, I'm sorry, so you're gonna...
See, if that's one of the things, because that isn't necessarily a given, that's a question. So if you go to the, the eligibility part, again, we always say that, you know, the urban renewal funds can only be used within the urban renewal district, so that's a given. The next one is, if a, if a coffee shop want, that wasn't in the urban renewal district, wanted to expand into new coffee shop, and have a second coffee shop that was in the urban renewal district, is everybody comfortable with making that sort of business expansion loan?
Yes, anything that would, I, and I, I guess I'm, um, so does that exclude even the startup in the urban renewal area? A, a new coffee shop altogether?
Yeah, well, that's, that, we're, we're not looking at startups.
Okay.
And that wasn't, that wasn't one of the things that was selected to look at, so we're staying with existing businesses.
How about a relocation rather than a second?
I think that's a good question. And, and if, if a person want, that owned a donut shop, let's say in the north end of town, but wanted to expand their business to a, uh, coffee shop in the south end of town, that's not a donut shop, would that be a business expansion? Those are the kinds of questions that, that I'm interested to hear more about. If an entrepreneur is expanding his business empire, is that a business expansion loan in your minds?
Again, what I'm hearing, reminding that it goes through the COG, for example, so has to meet their, you know, this lending criteria, so all we're, we're talking about is eligibility. And I, I guess, um, my reaction is, you know, business in the urban renewal area is, is good, that's what we want. So, you know, I, go ahead and eliminate, as you've indicated, a startup business, we're not in that, but, but if we've got a track record with someone, with a business person, and it's a similar or an expansion of that business of which they have expertise, and if shown, then I, I would say yes would be mine, because it...
I would agree.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree, if, if your example, shop that wants to expand in the urban renewal, you know, you're creating jobs, and that same business would undoubtedly sell the product that it had done at one end at the other end. In my mind, that's a business expansion, that's not a startup. Kating, uh, from down here, and it's a two-person thing, and they move up here, and now they've got bigger room, they've got tables, so they need another person, uh, to, to, down those tables, business expansion, that's, fit into that as well. As, and I agree, and meet the criteria that's been set, and if we're using the COG criteria, uh, that, that certainly makes sense.
Okay. And then the next three are basically came, came from the COG criteria for their, the, oh, go ahead.
For the benefit of the audience, COG is Council of Governments.
Thank you. The, the loan amounts, they suggested, they, these are their three tiers, so, and the reason they're doing that is because there would be different, uh, requirements for the loan payback, that, for example, if it was a tier one loan of 500 to 2,500 dollars, then it's, then they're suggesting a four-year payback, where there, a bigger loan would be a six-year payback. So there, there really isn't a lot, unless you have some discussion about it, there's nothing, there's no big discussion items about those. Could the interest...
The one up above, though, you, I, I notice I marked nonprofit organizations as kind of a question mark under the eligibility criteria, was, the, the question was, do you want a loan to a nonprofit, or do you want a...
Yeah, I, I guess I did miss that one, that, that's true. It's how do you feel about nonprofit loaning, making a, a business expansion loan to a nonprofit organization? I'm not sure I can give you the best example of that.
Well, again, I, I don't have a phobia, because one, I'm assuming the loan would be, uh, credit underwritten, and that's a challenge, and then the, you know, secured collateral of some degree, so if it's an entity, as long as it's a legal entity and meeting the other criteria.
Great.
Kurt, any idea whether COG has experience with loaning to nonprofits?
No, I'm not sure if that, I'm not sure if that's in their criteria currently or not. I'll find out, though. So the interest rate, are we, are, as, and when you've thought about this in the past, have you thought that this would be another zero-interest loan program? Uh, or would it be, and would it be a fixed interest rate program? Or would it be a prime minus program? I mean, if it's a prime plus program, then that's like a, a bank loan type of thing. I'm, my, my feeling after working through this a while is that there's much more risk in this type of program, so there may be a reason that you may want to attach some interest rate to it, uh, to, to help with that.
Mr. Chair? You know, relative to that, and I don't, I don't know what the response you got back from the bank managers was, but I'm just wondering if the lo, the loans for lesser amounts, not that we would want to be careless, or, um, but on the other hand, you know, if that should have like a, a different equity requirement than one for a larger amount? You know, if you're gonna loan somebody 500 dollars, it's different from loaning somebody 25,000 dollars, and I would also wonder, you know, if the interest rate should be different.
Kurt, on the, the, um, Council of Governments loan, they charge an interest rate on theirs?
Yes, they do, and you have a sheet of paper, it was one of the exhibits, I think.
I probably passed it nicely.
There's a document that, that looks like this, that's in there, and, and then also they just sent out this information to us, it shows that their, their, um, loan currently is at 4.2 percent.
The reason I ask is because I, I remember that they did, and I frankly think, uh, on this, that there should be some interest, I mean, I, I just think that there should, I don't think it should be exorbitant, um, it's not free, in other words, they, they do have to, to, uh, and, uh, if we want, if we want charges, you know, the same at the Council of Governments, that's, that's one thing, or, you know, loan rates, but I don't think that it hurts anybody to pay a little bit of it on this kind of a loan. I would think that we could come up with, on the smaller loan, maybe not as much, you know, maybe a graduate, a, a interest rate, at least to know, let them know that, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also answered my question here, Kurt, regarding nonprofits, and they do, uh, nonprofits are eligible for the, for the COG program.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, um, you know, I, I'm agreeing with Counselor Ryan, um, I would throw it maybe back to the COG a bit and have them advise us, um, they see, and since the, the intent is to add to the dollars, so that they're funded, um, maybe initially that would be, you know, I'd be more comfortable with their request, or their observation, and sameness, uh, makes everything a little easier, I think.
Yes.
But it's a risk factor, and, you know, it's unfamiliar with the, the, you know, what the lean position is, and what the collateral really is, would, to me, drive the interest rate, but I'd say that's a good one to toss to the, the experts.
Okay, we'll do that. Then on the next category, request types, do you see anything in there that you don't think that this loan would be appropriate to loan for? Or are there some things that you, other things that you think may want to add to that list? This isn't an all-inclusive list, but it's a general list of categories that we came up with.
Mr. Chair, there's two that I don't like, uh, and one is the finance of debt, uh, refinance of debt and the real estate purchase, I don't think guys are one of those. They're, I mean, we're trying to help them expand and improve, not there to help them buy land. If, if they're leasing the land and, you know, uh, need some improvements, I don't see a problem there, or real estate improvements, but, um, anyway, that's, again, that's my particular opinion. And refinancing of debt is not, I mean, if they're, if they're that much in debt, I don't think we would really want to loan to them.
Anyone else?
Well, I guess finally, I'm kind of writing a note to myself, that it's back to what are we trying to accomplish, and what niche are we trying to fill that either is unfilled or needs more funding towards? So, um, again, I think the COG folks would certainly be able to help us a lot, and, you know, with their learning curve on this kind of stuff.
The, yeah, the COG program does say that it may be eligible, but our, the program certainly wouldn't buy a piece of land, but it may help with a down payment, uh, where, you know, their portion of the cost of getting into it. So we'll, we'll work a little more closely on that item. And then, um, I think the other ones, we can, unless you have something about the terms that you'd like to talk about, the loan fees, that comes right out of the COG one, uh, their, their fees, and, uh, we assume that the review committee would just be our existing loan committee, that you wouldn't want to create a second committee. So with, with that, if there's any other questions, we'll be glad to incorporate that in, and we'll try to come up with a, a real drafty draft for you, and then, and then we can have a little bit more substantial discussion. Thank you.
I'm looking at the time right now, and I've got 10 minutes left, and we've got two resolutions we have to get through, I'm just wondering, are we gonna make it through the next two items, or do we have to postpone those, or? Looking at staff, I don't know how long it's gonna take, I just, you know, I don't want to run into the mayor's time here.
It's, it's up to you.
I have a consensus from the, uh, the agency on whether they want to continue with the last two items, or carry them over to the next meeting, and go through the resolutions, or...
Well, the resolution seemed pretty quick, because that, that was the items up above that we've already kind of walked through. I, I would see the, perhaps, Item 10 being, uh, it being a presentation taking a little longer.
Yeah, and, and those two are really, um, sort of update and presentation items that we could easily...
Nine, nine, and 10 are?
Easily put them off.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I think we should put Items Number 9 and 10 off until the next, uh, Urban Renewal meeting. meeting.
I have any objections? Okay, moving on, we have no public hearing resolutions, we have two resolutions for approval. The first resolution is Urban Renewal Resolution 201301, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of Lincoln City approving a contract with Group McKenzie for engineering and design services related to the D-Lake Traffic Signal Project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend the approval of Resolution UR 2013-01.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Seeing this would be a voice.
You may need to make that motion to allow the changes, there, there are corrections that need to be made in those resolutions. There's wording that needs to be.
Some editing that, okay, so to allow, you know, I'll make, still make the motion to approve, but allow the city recorder to make any kind of editorial corrections and spelling and?
Basically, the title says award of bid, but there's language inside that says award of contract, and it actually is an award of bid, it is not an award of a contract.
Okay.
So we should just make it all award of bid?
Well, we'll allow the correction of the resolution, you know, that.
My second would reflect that.
Quampt.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
And Noracus.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next one is for Urban Renewal 2013-02, a resolution, the Urban Renewal Agency of Lincoln City approving a, can I go with contract here?
No, stay with an award of.
With an award. With Group McKenzie for engineering and designing services related to the Southwest 35th Street Parking Lot Project.
I would so move.
Second.
But, same kind of editorial, editorial and corrections for consistency in the resolution?
Okay, Sprague, or, I'm sorry, Noracus.
Yes.
Quampt.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are there any comments from emergency members this evening?
Might check with public, see if there's any.
Are there any comments from the public this evening? Do you want to make a public statement?
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, could we thank you for your service this past year as our chair? Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm not going anywhere.
I know, but you, you won't be the chair this, this episode.
Well, we'll see what Roger does. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, sir.